Okay, we're about to set a record. This will be one consecutive meeting in a row that we have started at 1:00 PM. So yay to the home team. We've managed one in a row. Let's see. Richard, lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance if you would, please.
Thank you, I would love to. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands united, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have a roll call, please, Kristi?
Councilmember Kite.
Here.
Councilmember Townsend.
Here.
Councilmember Smotrich.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Wiel.
Here.
Wiel, excuse me, and Mayor Hobart.
By the way, the second was better than the first.
Wiel.
Yeah. Either way, we say wow. Wow.
That's true.
Okay, we've got, we've covered the hard part. Now let's move on. This is the time on our agenda for non-agenda public comment for people who would like to speak to subjects that are not on today's agenda. And I'm going to have the pleasure of introducing you to a part-time resident here and part-time resident of Lexington, Kentucky. We call Ms. Judy Miller.
Thank you all very much for your time. And Mayor, since your grandmother was a Kentuckian, I know that you have wonderful, wonderful ideas and everything is going to work out fine for the residents of the Rancho Mirage Country Club, which is in the greatest neighborhood in one of the greatest states in the United States of America. And I am a winter resident here, and I came back and I saw a chain-link fence all across the back of my house. And that's un-American, and it's an infringement of all of our rights as Americans. And we're so blessed to be on the corner of Bob Hope and Frank Sinatra Drives. We have one of the greatest addresses in the United States. And for the, what's this called? Oasis Ranch LLC, for these fellows to come into the Rancho Mirage community and start to destroy it and infringe on our rights as citizens of this great country. We thank you and we are grateful to you for everything that you all have done, especially Sandra, who I understand has been a champion to our cause. But we don't live, it's not 1941 and we're not in Krakow. And it's not 1961 and we're not in Berlin. We are in the Rancho Mirage city. We are in the Coachella Valley.
Yeah, but do you know the year?
Yes, 2015. Thank you, Mayor, thank you, 2015. We are being hurt. Our property values have plummeted. Our views are gone. And our homes are being invaded. People have done this to manipulate us as homeowners, as they did in Krakow in '41 and in Berlin in 1961. Don't let these people manipulate us. We are United States citizens. These people, these fellows from the Oasis Ranch LLC must be stopped. They must be stopped. This is Rancho Mirage Country Club. We are across the street from one of the greatest estates in our country, the Sunnylands, which is Ambassador Annenberg's estate, and billions of dollars there. And also, they gave that to our city. And I believe that Annenberg's did, as a gift, and endowed it. So we are in a very, very, very special neighborhood, one of the greatest in this country. And we thank you and are grateful for your help and support. We need to know where we stand. We need to know what is expected of us, what our responsibilities are, and we need to know where we go from here. And right now, I'm going to defer to another resident, Stan.
Levinson.
Stan Levinwitz.
Levinson.
Levinson, who I just met.
He's been called a lot of things, so.
And he knows all of you all, and I know that he has a lot more input and information. I just returned here from Kentucky. My father was served on the City Council on Life in Kentucky for years. I sort of know a little bit about some of the things you all do, and I thank you again.
Thank you.
Stan.
Actually, we don't allow deferring one person to another, so Stan will wait a couple of minutes. He knows he's like a cleanup batter on this. But let me ask Steve Quintanilla. Steve, can you give us some kind of an update on where the Rancho Mirage Country Club stands legally at the moment on that issue?
Well, the appeal period has, the period for which they had to comply has expired. We are prepared to go to court to sue them and to get a court order to force them to remove the fence. Sandra's not here. Oh, there you are. Sandra, why don't you report on where you are and your part of the process?
Okay, thank you, Steve. So as you know, the city is pursuing enforcement matters in this. And yesterday, we actually appeared in court to serve a petition to obtain abatement warrant to remove the fence. It's in the judge's hands right now. We're actually waiting for the call to receive the decision on that order.
And we're also requesting that they pay all the costs of any removal that we have to do ourselves, and attorney's fees and the cost for Sandra's time as well.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you also, Sandra. Now, Stan Levinson.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, staff. I feel like I'm becoming a permanent fixture here. This is about my sixth meeting in a row, and this is even more of a better attendance record now than when I was on the planning commission, because, you know, you could look the other way in those days and get away with it. Anyway, I'm here today. The first thing I want to clarify, so that people that live at Rancho Mirage who watch this on television and that will understand, that essentially, every law or ordinance, whether it's passed state, county, city, federal, whatever, must comply with at least one of three items. And those three items are public health, public safety, and public welfare. And you can justify the Department of Defense, the Treasury Department, which some people would argue, and a number, any other agency in the government that has to conform to those. Now, today, I'd like to talk to you about, I brought up, as Mayor Hobart knows, a couple of items each time, so I didn't want anybody to get confused, but I didn't want to neglect any items. And today, I want to tell you what has transpired with respect to our, I think about 30,000-square-foot clubhouse. They had an online auction, the new owners, and they got rid of every fixture. All the kitchens were pulled apart and the stainless steel equipment was taken out. All the 80 golf carts were sold at the auction. They closed the pro shop and got rid of everything that was in theirs. And they have, all the furnishings and the other fixtures in the clubhouse are gone, so it's really just a sheer skeleton. And I've told this to Sandra, she knows about it. And what we agreed is if a truck sneaks in there early in the morning and it has a caterpillar tractor on it, I'm supposed to dial 911. And they told me that that's, will be on file and that will be dealt with and that they'll come and stop this sort of stuff there. There has never been a permit filed by the, for an amendment to the zoning nor a demolition permit, and they're getting ready to tear down this building. And we watch this as owners over there, and we are seeing the disaster that occurs. And I'm assuming that when that clubhouse was built in the early '80s, and Randy, you'd probably know the answer to this better than anyone, asbestos as a wallboard and building product was not illegal. And I think it was in the '90s that the federal government declared asbestos as a non-legal building product because it was a carcinogen. And so anyway, if they start tearing the place down, they've got to have some kind of special thing to cover themselves so that they're not spreading deadly material around that people breathe, you know? And so anyway.
Excuse me, Stan, are you saying that there is some evidence of?
Well, what I'm saying is that in those days in the early '80s, that may not have been considered a carcinogen product.
You're saying it may be there?
It may be there.
I got you.
So, you know, we don't know until somebody starts taking it down and so forth, that it's better to be safe than sorry in a situation like that. And additionally, I think some of you people know, we have filed a lawsuit. We have hired a legal firm that has, their headquarters is Seattle, but they have offices in Pasadena, San Francisco, and San Diego. It's a very large firm, and they came highly recommended to us. And so we're in the process of seeing what goes on. And I think Randy and some of the other people here, Sandra, knows about the lawsuit and so forth. I tried to keep people appraised as best I could. And anyway, those are the basic things. Also, we had a meeting at one of our board meetings, board meetings at the country club for our HOA, and we had three gentlemen from the assessors office come out. And they did an inspection of the place. And when they got through, they came to our meeting and said that we would be in receipt of forms after the first of the year that we were to fill out, and that it would be their estimate that our property taxes for the coming year are going to be dropping about 40% because that's basically about the number and the value of depreciation that has occurred. We had a home that was listed for sale when these guys came in and bought the course, and it was put on the market at $500,000, and they finally sold it for $333 or $332. That's close to a 40% loss for that owner. So anyway, I pretty well covered everything up to date, and I think you guys probably know as much as anybody does with respect to this thing. And we're looking forward to what Mr. Quintanilla set a few meetings back when the city's going to come in here. And we're, I'm sure that our board would be glad to pass an assessment to help offset any costs and, you know, do whatever it takes. Because as I told you the last time I was here, all the places I've lived, I've never lived in a city that had a better government and was more efficient and professional than Rancho Mirage. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I do have a question. Sandra, when the ruling comes down, how long will it take for the fence to come down?
24-hour notice is all that's required, yes.
Great, very good. Thank you.
It may take them two days to get it down, but.
Good.
Once they start.
Nicole Van Dill.
Hi, how are you all doing today?
Good.
Right on. I'm going to just read some of my notes and some of the thoughts that are coming off the top of my head. But what I came here for is because about a year ago, our police in the city of Cleveland got out of the car and shot dead a 12-year-old boy who was playing with a toy gun on a playground. He didn't shout to the child, "Put the gun down." He didn't do anything. He just shot him dead. That's not what police do in the greatest nation on earth, in my head. Police act smart. Police are well-informed as to how to handle children and have a conversation. Every single one of us need to be able to have simple conversations with children when we don't know what's going on. I come in here to City Hall and do that, is what I feel like mostly, because fuck of Fukushima, we have a nuclear power plant melting down into the Pacific Ocean, nuclearizing our water at a rate we cannot even comprehend at the most scientific levels. And we're complaining about a fence somebody built on their own property here in the greatest constitutional nation-state on the planet. But you can't build a fence on your own property? I'm curious about who had these conversations with the people who just built a fence on their property. Because those conversations are really simple to have and involve very simple discussions, and they should never involve a lawsuit unless your primary person going in is an attorney that gets paid for doing that. And I understand that business model, but that's not a good model for government. I'm very thankful for that young lady over there because every time I see her, she's doing a very professional job. Unfortunately, the dictates of authority coming down to her are having her do things that we probably wouldn't do for ourselves. And I'm sorry, we ask you to do those kinds of things for us, but I thank you for doing them for us because sometimes we don't know how to do them, and we need professional My notes for y'all.
Are you finished?
My notes for y'all.
You've got another half-minute.
Right on. Better be safe than sorry. Fuck a Fukushima, talk to your friends out there. We have a nuclear power plant called Diablo Canyon. Same kind of plant, unearthquake faults. That's stupid. Stop stupid very quickly. Thank you.
Thank you. Alan Worthy.
Hi, good afternoon. Thank you for having me. So yeah, my heart and feelings go out for the people at the Rancho Mirage Country Club. Like I said before, we can't have a city that fails or a country club if we don't put up with a school failing, so. The reason I came today really is because I know that not everyone watches television. And tonight, at 6 o'clock on Channel 3, is an expose of the city of Palm Springs. So that'll, you know, bring an official beginning of the end. So I hope you all watch it, of course. I'm sure you will. And I guess December the 2nd, the new mayor and council are seated, so we can look forward to a beginning, a real beginning of the end of the crime and corruption of the city of Palm Springs. So I hope you all watch it. Also, it's a little early, but I'll tell you, on a different note, getting back to work, Father, Mother, God, I'm grateful for that. At the tolerance center here in Rancho Mirage, on February the 3rd, it's a Wednesday, they're going to screen A Patch of Blue, starring Sidney Poitier and Shelley Winters. And I had the great privilege and pleasure of studying with Shelley in her master class for years. And so I'll introduce the film and do a Q and A after, so I'll keep you abreast. I think there are two screenings, so. I know it's early, but the holidays, so put that on your calendar. I know, I hope you'll all make it to that beautiful tolerance center. It's very important. Also, because of the subject matter of the interracial thing, it is Black History Month in February, so thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to a matter that's not on today's agenda? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment section. Okay, we'll go to the City Council Board Member comments. Let's start with you, Richard. Anything?
Thank you, Dana. Couple of items. The first one is, I'd like to congratulate the Rancho Mirage High School football team for their big win last Friday. They beat Polytechnic Pasadena 34-14, and they now go on to this next round. And this Friday, they'll be playing Notre Dame from Riverside at 7:30 at the high school. It's a great team. It's the first year they've had seniors, and they could go all the way. So go out and have some fun. It's a great event out there. Marching band, the show choir, and the football team really put on a good event. So get out there, support your local high school. And other than that, just want to wish you all a very merry Thanksgiving and hope you all have a great holiday season.
Thank you, Richard. Nothing for ours? How about you, Charlie?
I do. I'd like to invite Lieutenant Shields from our Sheriff's Department to come to the podium, and he's going to speak on the Blue Light program, which will be held at City Hall.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, City Council, and city staff. I'm here today to invite you to our Blue Light ceremony, which is going to occur Monday night, December 7th, at 6:00 PM, right here at the Rancho Mirage City Council chambers. This ceremony gives us an opportunity to remember those law enforcement officers who have lost their lives in the line of duty in Riverside County. It's also a time for us to remember the family members who have left behind by those officers. So if you are available and can make it, we'd love to have you there. It's again, December 7th at 6:00 PM. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Ted.
Yes, I'd like to mention that I had the pleasure just a few minutes ago of meeting Jordan. Jordan is sitting in the wheelchair in the front of the room here. I had never met Jordan. I introduced myself to Jordan and his father. Jordan's father explained to me that Jordan is a cerebral palsy person who is remarkable. He has a company, a landscape company. He flies an airplane. He does everything that any one of us can do. And I have a particular attraction to United Cerebral Palsy because my uncle founded the organization in 1949. My niece was born with a disease that they didn't know, and it became known as cerebral palsy because my aunt contracted German measles during her pregnancy. And that was the foundation. And my uncle, who was in the media business, asked Bob Hope to head up the first telecast. And that was the beginning of the long journey. And so when I saw Jordan and his father just a short time ago, I introduced myself, and I just cannot be more proud to welcome you to our chambers, and I look forward to you returning. By the way, Jordan and his father live at Rancho Mirage Country Club. They're most interested, obviously, in how the city is assisting them in resolving the issue. And again, I thank you very much for joining us. One other thing, if I may, Mr. Mayor, as I've gotten questions during the week about what's going into the Rancho Mirage marketplace to take the place of Pavilions Headed. And on November 9th, the bankruptcy judge awarded the market to Gelson's Markers, which is a high-end, very fine market. More than likely, it will take them at least several months to remodel the building. But when it's done, it will be a magnificent addition to our city. So I thought you all would like to know that, and I too wish everyone a wonderful Thanksgiving. It's a time for family reunions, football, turkey, and of course, the age-old expression, "I ate too much." Have a wonderful holiday and a wonderful Thanksgiving. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Ted. I'd like to thank Randy on behalf of the council for the outstanding job that staff performed in putting on, conducting, cleaning up after, and closing down the Rancho Mirage Art Affair. I thought that everyone performed enthusiastically and made me feel that that event was clearly part of the heart of Rancho Mirage, one of the things that we do annually and have now for about 13, 12, 13, 14 years. And I just can't remember an event over those prior years where we had so many things going on that kind of made it more difficult than usual, including, of course, the amphitheater and getting that ready to go, and all the time and effort that it took to put the amphitheater center stage, which, by the way, I thought the amphitheater demonstrated nobly that it will have an extremely fine future in the city and be part of the general assets and the cultural world for all of the Coachella Valley, not just our city. So anyway, Randy, I just hope you will pass on to all of staff our sincere apology for, not apology, our sincere thanks and gratitude for having done a job that really was above and beyond the call of duty.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll pass that on.
Thank you. Okay, we're moving on to the minutes for November 5th. Can we have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second. And the motion carries. Unanimously, 5-0, another winner for the minutes. We'll move now to the consent calendar, and this time, Randy, we're only going to give you 30 seconds because you've been taking too long to get through those items today. You just, we can't afford the time, so on your mark, get set, go. 30 seconds.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's one item on your consent calendar. It's the demands. If you have any questions, we're here to answer them. Thank you.
Any demands? Anybody in the audience wish to speak to any? Close the consent calendar. We've set a record. You not only didn't use the 30 seconds, you got it done in 12. So let some other council try to beat that record. Next, we go to reports.
You want to vote on that?
We need to vote.
Should we take a vote on it, you think?
Let's do that. Let's see, be different.
It shows you how Democratic we are. I didn't think we should, but.
I move we accept the consent calendar.
The motion carries unanimously. And now we'll move on to reports concerning the CV link update. We have been talking about the efforts of the Coachella Valley Association of Governments to fund a part of the CV link from the Measure A funds that were passed by the voters in 2002. In 2002, the voters approved a one-half cent sales tax increase, and that money was destined to be used for road repairs on the highways, roadways, intersections, and bridges of Riverside County and in the Coachella Valley for our portion of that. The CV link has been around now for about four years, four and a half years. And it's not until literally today that we see the reports of various subcommittees of CVAG, Coachella Valley Association of Governments, that indicate that it is going to be on the agenda for December 7th of this year. They're having three, three subcommittees are meeting in just a day or two. Hang on a second. That are meeting on November 23rd, and two on that day and one maybe the next day. All of a sudden, these committees are meeting very quickly so that they can pass a measure that purports to amend the process by which Measure A funds can be obtained. They, historically, from the time that the Measure A funds first began, which was back in 2000, 1988, when it was passed the first time, and then when it was renewed in 2002, the funds have only been used to repair the disabled bridges, highways, roadways, and intersections of the Coachella Valley. And all of a sudden, CV link. And all of a sudden, CV Link, a brand-new project that is managed by CVAG under the guidance of Tom Kirk, the executive director, have now come out from under the shadows where it wasn't really talked about before, that they were coming after Measure A funds. But now, they're trying to put a closing rush so that by the end of the year, the executive committee of CVAG will have voted to approve the taking of Measure A funds for a brand-new project such as the CV Link. And they will say that they did it following all the rules, where there aren't too many rules. But in the -- in Measure A, which is a copy of what I'm showing you here, in Measure A, there's a particularly important sentence that I quote to show what the intent was on the use of Measure A funds. I've said that the intention, that when Measure A was passed, that the money was to be used to repair our roadways and bridges and intersections and that sort of thing. And I can also say, there's never been a dime, to my knowledge, since 1988, there's never been a dime taken from that fund that went to a brand-new project, ever. The voters, when they were asked to approve the Measure A ordinance, which was giving these areas, Coachella Valley being one of three, giving these areas that extra 1/2 cent of sales tax, which amounts to probably around $30 million a year, that never has one dime of that money been spent on a brand-new project or given to any other kind of project other than roads, repairing roads, and so forth. The preamble to the Measure A, I'll just read one small portion of it, where it says, "Without additional funds, the system will bog down and pavement will crumble into permanent disrepair." That tells you in just one sentence what Measure A was all about, was to prevent our crumbling roads from actually crumbling. And so, all of a sudden, we see CVAG now ready to pass, in various committees, this new measure that changes things, and I'll mention in what way in just a moment, but at page 11 of the transportation plan, which is part of Measure A, it says that the Measure A revenues will be used, not maybe, can be, will be used for state highways and regional road improvements, period. So for somebody to be able to say, hmm, we've got to find a way for that to include CV Link, because if we don't get CV Link in it, the dream child of a handful of people, then we won't be able to fund CV Link, and it'll fail. So what they have done is they have come up with this idea how they can invade the CV -- how they can invade the Measure A fund pool by writing some new rules that say, within the CVAG realm, having to do with the prioritization of our roadways that are in repair, in need of repair, that are currently in a state of disrepair. We've got about 250 of them on this list, and we maintain that list fairly closely, about the same number. But as we do some of the projects, then other projects will come on. But we have to get up to the top 10% before you can really get any money, any of this Measure A money. But now, it's going to be that we can also have other projects that can qualify. And they're going to amend, and I can tell you that my prediction that the executive committee will end up passing this probably by a vote of about 10 to 2, something like that, or 12 to 2, or 15 to 2, depending on how many supervisors they get out to the meeting. The Board of Supervisors has five delegates on our nine-member board, otherwise would be nine-member. At any rate, I just wanted to alert you that it's moving forward to use Measure A funds. They want to use $20 million in the construction phase of CV Link, and they want to use anywhere from $600,000 to $1 million a year for operations and maintenance of CV Link, all of which there is a very strong argument is illegal. But it'll take court to make that final judgment. Anyway, I just wanted to alert you that the effort to take Measure A funds is reaching into a new stage, and I'd like to have people alerted to that, people who are concerned about the use or misuse of these funds. So now we'll move on to the action calendar. Randy, item number three. Oh, excuse me. Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to speak to the subject of CV Link?
I would.
Okay, well, don't take more than three minutes than you can.
I would just say that I totally agree with you because that Measure A thing that you were talking about, the way that they are trying to get the money for it from that is actually to ameliorate the need for it at all. Because if we didn't use the roadways, and us younger people need to not use the roadways as much as we do, we don't need to rebuild them. And so, changing the concept going into the meeting, if we can get the Measure A not doing what you're telling me it's going to do, because I agree with you, we don't need to be doing that with those monies. But if we do it as an amelioration to even having the need for those Measure A funds, then perhaps we can get it done a little bit neater, and we can still have our bike transport through the valley. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the action calendar. Randy, item number three is in your hands.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to turn this over to the intern to the city manager, Daniel Trevino.
Thank you, Randy. Good afternoon, Mayor and members of the city council. The subject matter I am presenting today is regarding Senate Bill 1193, Human Trafficking Public Notice Requirements. I ask that the city council receive and file this staff report as an information item. SB 1193 became law, adding Section 52.6 to the California Civil Code, which requires certain businesses, business establishments, to post a notice informing the public and victims of hotline numbers where they can seek help or report unlawful activity. The business establishments required to post this notice are listed on Page 31 of the agenda in my staff report. To assist the state in implementing this law in Rancho Mirage, a letter will be sent out to all relevant businesses to inform them of their obligation to post the human trafficking notice. A sample notice from the California DOJ is attached in this staff report. With that, I conclude my presentation. I'm here to ask -- I'm here to take any questions you may have.
Thank you, Danny. Does anybody have any questions of Danny? Anybody in the audience who wants to address the subject? Thank you. Yes, sir. Mr. Harrington?
Yes, Michael Harrington, thank you. So I wanted to make a few comments, even though this is just marked as receive and file. This came to CVAG as a result of Mayor Ramos asking me to give a presentation to CVAG, and because of some prior work I had done over the years with the nonprofit parts of the Riverside County Anti-Human Trafficking Task Force, because they have private public partnerships. So I did some work with them as a lawyer and did some work with the state of California in working on some new laws and worked with some deputy attorney generals. And without going into the background that I had, I gave a presentation to CVAG Public Safety Committee, and somehow, how CVAG, the strange world of how CVAG does things, they have these private meetings where they decide things such as goals, public safety goals, and they took it off, they took, they decided in private to take human trafficking off of the agenda as a goal. And so it did not go back to the full committee to be discussed in public. It never got on the agenda, and I had an issue with that. But nonetheless, that's a Technical Brown Act issue. So what replaced it was the public safety of CV Link Bike Path. Instead of handling that in transportation, they handled it in public safety. And that was a goal decided more important than human trafficking. So they ended up wanting to do something, and they came up with this kind of convoluted resolution. It's a resolution to follow a law, but we already have to follow laws. It's a state-of-California law. So as a lawyer, I don't understand why we're having a resolution to follow a law. This is something only politicians understand, I guess, and I don't understand it. I'm learning politics. I don't understand it yet. Some other issues I had with it is it seems to say, when you read the whole resolution, that we're supposed to only put up the posters that Arcad designed. I would love to see the posters everywhere. I'd like to know where to get 1,000 of them. In fact, that was asked at Public Safety Committee, and no one answered it. Maybe one of the sheriffs could answer it if they know. But the law is to put up this poster, just like you have posters required in restaurants that might say, "Wash your hands." You can buy those online anywhere if they comply with the law. So this seems to say, "Don't follow state-of-California law. We really want you to follow this resolution instead." Well, that would be illegal if we were to do that. In talking to the people who wrote this, that was their intent, that we only get these posters from one place, from Safe House. I love Safe House as a shelter, but we're supposed to only get the posters from them so they can raise money for the nonprofit. Maybe there's a better way to raise money for them. I love their shelter. So it seems very convoluted, and it seems to do the reverse. We're not getting the posters up now. And I asked Safe House, "Where are the posters that you put up that you talked about at CVAG?" And they said, "We don't have to tell you." I have that in writing. Our lawyer said, "We don't have to disclose it." So these public, this public campaign and these public posters and this public law, they go, "We're now resolving Safe House to put these up, and they won't tell us where they're posted." So some group wanted to go put 1,000 up or 100, or a church group wanted to volunteer. They wouldn't know where to go put them up because they won't tell us where they're already put up. And I have that in writing from Safe House. So I have a lot of issues with it, but I think it could have just been designed as an announcement for public awareness. Hey, there's this law. Did you know about it? What do you want to do about it? Let's get these posters up. That would have made more sense. So I don't know where we are now, but I wanted to raise some of those concerns. I think it probably went over my three minutes, but I think these are important concerns to think about. What are we doing right now? This law was passed in 2012. It became effective in April 2013. They only started putting the posters up in January of 2015, and they only put up a couple hundred. And it turns out that most of those were put up by an unnamed sheriff's lieutenant that did it on her own, with her own volunteers, and she covered her own jurisdiction, her own city, and did every single one. So it wasn't, it wasn't a result of this. Okay, well, thank you. Again, my name is Michael Harrington. Hope we can discuss it some other date. Thank you.
Thank you. Randy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is not a adoption of a resolution that was proposed by CVAG. This is to help the state implement Senate Bill 1193. It says on the staff report, "We recognize that the bill became law on January 1st of 2015. Our intention here is to help the businesses implement the law. We're going to send them letters and send them the posters and have them put the posters up." I think the most important part is the hotline number for victims or people that suspect wrongdoing is occurring. So we agree with you. This is not the resolution. This is to help the state implement the law.
Okay, we will receive and file the staff report. We'll move on now to item number four. I guess this is Cindy. Cindy?
Thank you, Mayor. On November 5th, 2009, the city council adopted Ordinance 982 approving the use of all mail ballots for city municipal elections. Staff is again requesting the use of all mail ballots for the April 12, 2016 election. The city will contract with the registrar voter's office to supply and mail all voting material to each Rancho Mirage voter, and the voted ballots will be mailed directly back to the registrar's office for processing or deposited in a ballot box at City Hall. Staff requests that city council adopt the following three resolutions: calling and providing notice of the election, requesting services from the registrar voter, and adopting regulations for candidates pertaining to materials submitted to the voters. And that completes my staff report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Cindy. Any questions of Cindy? Anybody in the audience have any questions or make any comments? Seeing none, I would move that we adopt the following three resolutions as identified in the staff report as A, B, and C. Do you have a second?
Becca.
Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously. Item number five.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll turn this over to Associate Planner Josh Altob. Josh?
Thank you, Mr. Blinder, Mr. Mayor, council members. This request involves a periodic review of development agreements in accordance with Rancho Mirage Municipal Code, Chapter 17.56. Staff analyzed the following seven development agreements. Number one, the Federated Development Agreement was approved in 1983. Numerous amendments have occurred over the years, with the Ninth Amendment being the most recent. The resort and spa suites have been completed and operating successfully for the past year and a half. The city is actively working with the resort on a future amendment to the agreement, which will be brought back to the council once the terms are agreed upon. This DA is currently in good standing. Number two, is Case Number 85 DA1 was approved back in 1985 to allow phased development of a self-storage facility, which was finished in 1989. The Rancho Mirage Self-Storage Complex is being properly managed and operated in compliance with the existing terms and provisions of their development agreement. Number three, the Eisenhower Medical Center Development Agreement was adopted in 1988 and covered the 100-acre campus. It's set a building height of four stories and less and assessed EMC traffic mitigation fees of $100,000. The site is being properly managed and is in compliance with the existing terms and provisions of the agreement. Number four is DA 97002 was approved in 1998 to ensure development of 158 vacation ownership units on 20 acres. The phased development was completed in a three-year time period that ended in 2004. The project is professionally managed, and special fees are being paid as required per the agreement. This vacation ownership project is in good standing concerning the requirements and conditions of their development agreement. Number five, in 2005, the city council approved a development agreement to allow construction of the 111 Plaza. The development agreement was amended to allow upstairs office uses if in lieu fees were paid for the loss of sales tax revenue, otherwise known as Ordinance Number 860. The fees are being paid as required, and the site is being properly managed and is in compliance with the existing terms and provisions of the development agreement. Number six is the Stone Bridge Development Agreement, which was approved by the city council in 2006 and required the subdivision to have lots that averaged 25,000 square feet. All required subdivision improvements were completed in 2008. The first single-family home was approved by the Planning Commission on September 24th, 2015, and the project is being maintained, and the terms of the DA are in good standing. Finally, number seven is DA 13002, which was approved by the council back in March of 2014. The on- and off-site track improvements were installed in late 2014 and completed by mid 2015 as required by the track map. The project applicant completed the PDP process for three model homes, all of which have been constructed and open for sales in June of this year. There are no outstanding code violations, and the project is in compliance with the terms of the DA. Staff has received no outside communications from any source regarding the periodic review of the development agreements. The Planning Commission reviewed the status of these development agreements and recommended that the city council find that the subject developers slash property owners are currently in compliance with the terms and conditions of the aforementioned development agreements. This concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to address any questions the council may have.
I have one question, Josh. What was the project involving Thomas Investments?
Thomas Investments is... I believe Thomas Investments is the Rancho Mirage Storage Facility, the second one.
The what?
The storage facility.
Thank you. Does there anybody have any questions?
Dana, I have a question. Josh, regarding item number one, which you started the report with, could you read back the portion that deals with the spa suites?
Of my notes or of the report?
Just the portion that you read.
Um, let's see. The resort and spa suites have been completed and operating successfully for the past year and a half. The city is actively working with the resort on a future amendment to the agreement, which will be brought back to city council once those terms are agreed upon.
Okay. I don't believe the spa suites are being operated, so I'm not sure whether we need to amend that or change. so I'm, I'm not sure whether we need to amend that or change it, but is that correct?
Can I answer that? If the Subcommittee will be meeting with the developer, and if we can come to some preliminary terms, an amendment to the development agreement will be forthcoming to the City Council in the future.
Okay. So are we going to hold off voting on this one until after the meeting?
No, I think you can vote on it because at this point in time, it's, it's fine.
Up to now.
Okay.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to address this subject? Seeing none, any other questions anybody wanted to ask? Okay. Can we have a motion, please? I'll move that the City Council find that the following developers, property owners are currently in compliance with the terms and conditions of their development agreements: Federated Gen LB Rancho LLC, Thomas Investments, Eisenhower Medical Center, Western Vacation Club, Alamo Group, Stone Bridge, and Verlaine Ventures LLC. Is there a second?
Second.
Charles Townsend is blue. Why is Charles Townsend blue? He's now green.
Now he's green.
He went from blue to green with envy. Motion carries unanimously, we'll move on to the last item on the regular agenda. Randy, I guess this goes to Isaiah.
Sure, we'll give him, can we give him 30 seconds on this one, too?
Forty-five, because this is really complex.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. The item before you today is the approval of two preliminary official statements for our 2015 Successor Agency Bond Refunding Plan. And what these resolutions do is allow the bond team to market the bonds to potential investors. And really what an official statement is, is it's a legal document that explains how investors in the bonds will be repaid and what the restrictions are, and it's essentially the legal document that governs the investment. The official statements for official record-keeping will be attached to the resolutions for the purpose of your agendas. They were on file with the city clerk. These documents are very long, they're about 100 pages each. And it's a standard process with all municipal bond issues, and staff is recommending approval of the resolutions so that we can continue with the refunding bond effort. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions of Isaiah? Seeing none, anybody in the audience have any questions or like to speak to this subject? Seeing none, can we have a motion, please? Okay.
I'll make a motion if you want, Dana. I'll make a motion.
Okay, and that's to approve the adoption of the resolutions, the two resolutions?
Do you want me to go ahead with that, or?
Yeah, go ahead, however you'd like to do it.
Okay. Recommend that the City Council approve and adopt Resolution Number 2015, next in order, approving of a form of preliminary official statement in connection with the sale and delivery of its merged redevelopment project tax allocation refunding bond, Series 2015A, parentheses, Whitewater Subarea, close parentheses, making certain determinations relating thereto and authorizing certain other actions in connection therewith. And item number B, that the City Council approve and adopt Resolution 2015, next in order, approving a form of a preliminary official statement in connection with the sale and delivery of the merged redevelopment project supporting that lien, tax allocation, refunding bonds, Series 2015A, parentheses, Northside Subarea, close parentheses, making certain determinations relating thereto and authorizing certain other actions in connection therewith.
Is there a second? Please vote.
Either way. Therefore therewith. There he goes.
Motion carries unanimously. We now turn to Steve Quintanilla to tell us what's on closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City Council is now going to recess in a closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9 regarding the following case, two cases, Brian Harrison versus City of Rancho Mirage, Veronica Juarez versus City of Rancho Mirage. Council will also discuss three potential litigation items pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9. And finally, the council will confer with the labor negotiator pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.8 regarding the Rancho Mirage Employees Association.
With that, we stand in recess.